This is a test, another test, testing the volume. So are we ready with recording?
Is there a wifi here?
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Lock and load.
Okay, the meeting will now come to order. We'll begin with introductions and seating of alternates. We'll begin with town staff. Don?
Uh, Don, I'll be recording the second here.
And Dan?
Dan Beray, town planner.
And we don't have any other town staff. So for commission members, we'll begin with introductions on my left.
Uh, Victoria Chetchet.
Bob Ellsworth.
Carolyn Freeman.
Robert Taylor.
Ken Kearns.
Ken, could I ask you to be seated for Chantel tonight, please?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is to accept the agenda. So we do have a revised agenda in front of us. May I have a motion to accept the revised agenda?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the agenda is accepted as presented. For our regular meeting, the first item of business is application twenty-two dash zero seven, one eighty-five Marlborough Street, Unit Three. Request for site plan review for one station hair salon with facilities for spray tanning, lash extensions, makeup and waxing. Application of Laura Brats and property Rosario V. Agostino, map twenty, lot two zero two, zone B dash two. Would someone like to speak on behalf of this application? You would just, just give the commission an overview of what you're applying for? And if you would approach, approach the podium and identify yourself and just a brief overview and sometimes that prompts us to ask some questions.
My name is Laura Brats. I am the applicant for the hair salon. Um, I'm looking to have a one-chair salon offering mostly bridal services, um, hair and makeup as well as spray tanning, lash extensions and waxing services.
Okay.
So I, I do, I do have a question.
So do I, so go ahead.
Um, so will you have any hazardous material that you'll have to dispose of?
Nothing outside of the standard chemicals that are used for coloring hair, other than that, no.
So there's no special requirements for disposal of that?
Um, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
So you mentioned your focuses, or one of your focuses is going to be on bridal?
Yes.
Parties, so I guess the thought that comes to mind is parking.
Yes.
Typically, the bridal party all gathers at the same time?
So, um, the bridal services are going to be for trials only. We are off-site for the day of the wedding. And so the bride herself would be coming in for a trial, usually with just a mom or maid of honor or something along those lines. But we wouldn't be offering services for the whole bridal party, um, off-site for that, but just onsite for the bridal trials.
Gotcha. I've never heard of a bridal trial, but that's a practice, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Trial run to make sure they like everything.
It is, it is. It is. I had to go to a field.
Have you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, other questions for Laura?
So how many parking spaces does, does this?
Five.
It requires five based on our parking, uh, regulations.
Okay, and that leaves six.
Remaining.
Remaining for Unit Two.
Correct.
Yes.
And that's after we allocate five to Unit Three.
Yeah, five to Unit Three, and I believe there's already five located to the, uh, the current retail shop.
Or smoke shop?
Yes.
I think that's, I think, um, we, Jacobson indicated that in his memo.
Absolutely.
Okay, any further questions for Laura? Any comments on the application? This, according to Jeff's memo, we had approved this site back in, uh, two thousand and fifteen, previously, so... I didn't anticipate a lot of questions. No further questions, comments? Alright then, do we have a motion, Dan? I'll take this one. Motion to approve application twenty-two dash zero seven, one eighty-five Marlborough Street, Unit Three. Request for site plan review for one station hair salon with facilities for spray tanning, lash extensions, makeup and waxing. Application of Laura Brats and property of Rosario V. Agostino, map twenty, lot two zero two, zone B two. As shown on site and floor plan and based on information submitted, testimony presented during hearing and subject to the following instructions and conditions integral to this application. One, that the applicant address and complies with the comments and recommendations from the Chatham Health District. Two, that the applicant address any comments from the fire marshal after submission of final plans. Three, that the certified letter of approval be, of approval be fired filed on the land records within a hundred and eighty days per zoning regulation ten dot five dot three dot two dot A. These requirements must be met prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Four, that a zoning permit application be submitted in accordance with zoning regulation eleven dot one dot one dot A to ensure compliance with this approval. Five, that any exterior light fixtures must comply with zoning regulation eight point three and must be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to installation. Six, that all proposed improvements associated with this application are to be completed according to the approved plan prior to the issuance of the required certificate of zoning compliance to operate businesses at this location where a performance bond will be required in accordance with zoning regulation section eleven dot two dot two. Seven, any proposed signage shall meet zoning regulation section eight point four. Eight, that this approval will expire in five years. Reasons, this, the proposal conforms to section five and ten point five of the zoning regulations. May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, that was, I think Robert got that one. So, uh, this is Bob, I vote aye. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Hi.
Rob?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Any opposed? If there would be none, okay, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, next item of business is to receive an application? So we have two, two applications to receive tonight. The first one is application twenty-two dash zero eight, fifty-four Riverview Street. Request for special permit modification for sixty-foot by sixty-foot concrete pad and hoop house structure for glass bead blasting in power washing. Application and property of Burdon N E L L C, map three, lot eight, zone R ten. Anything, Dan, you'd like to say about that at this point?
Uh, no, just that the applicant, uh, would like to be heard on the third, as long as that's okay with you guys.
Okay, sounds, sounds good.
Um, do we have, that, on the third, we have the, um...
Yeah, but we should be able to do. I don't think these two, that one will take some time. But, uh, the applicant certainly is looking to, to push ahead quickly.
The subdivision one, you think will take a while?
I, yes.
I would expect that. Because that's a public hearing as well, right?
Yeah, usually we hear them as they're, um, submitted, but if you want, I can put these two in front of that one. It's up to you.
Yeah.
Would you want to do that?
I think that a courtesy to the.
Sure.
Applicants.
Okay.
That probably might be nice. Okay, and the next application to receive in tonight is application twenty-two dash zero nine, one 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 six Portland Cobalt Road. Request for site plan modification to alter approved plan to allow for approved parking area to be changed to gravel surface. Application and property of Graff Enterprises LLC, map twenty-three, lot thirty, zone B dash two. And, uh, next order of business is other business and just, uh, a note that application twenty-two dash, dash, zero six was, which is a subdivision on Penfield Hill and Stephen Tom Road. Public hearing will be scheduled for November third meeting, which is our next meeting. So next order of business is our new business, so we are going to review and adopt the twenty twenty-three planning and zoning meeting schedule. So we were given the, the schedule tonight. We take a quick look at that. See if anyone... Has any comments?
So for the July meeting, uh, any reason why we're not doing that, uh, on the, the third, Thursday, like, you know, to kind of keep it with the other meeting dates?
Uh, this is what we did this year, I believe, the July meeting. What's the second? Thursday again, so we just kind of kept it the same.
Okay.
And there's only one meeting typically in July as well.
Yep, yep.
Okay, any comments? Objections?
It's too far in advance.
So I forget, do we have to?
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on this?
Yep.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion then to adopt the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule as presented?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Okay, the meeting schedule is adopted. Okay, uh, we'll move on to old business then. So, uh, first item is update to our cannabis zoning regulations.
Okay, so I went ahead and, uh, based on your comments, made a couple of updates. Uh, basically, um, uh, I think Rob had brought this up at the last meeting to, to number and letter, uh, the definitions that we currently have.
Yep.
So I just added that. I added removal of the current definition of person. And that's in specific terms, and we'll just throw the definition of person in, in defined terms. Um, the only other, uh, I changed to special permit, retail dispensary cultivation of cannabis. I think it was just cultivation of cannabis in B two and then the addition of, I think it was retail store and cultivation of cannabis in the IP zone. And then the one thing that was problematic is you guys had asked me to, uh, keep the town at one retail store with different wording, and looking into that, we can't do it in that manner. Um, the state, uh, through state statute can limit the, the number of, um, establishments in town. Uh, I was given guidance that we cannot. So, we have the one approval. It's kind of, with the prohibition, it's kind of the defunct one approval. Uh, if you really wanted to get, not have the prohibition and constrain where the locations can be, um, you know, you can, you can say no more within a certain distance of the already approved store, no more, uh, retail establishments within certain distances of certain facilities like schools or daycares or, you know, back in the day, they used to say churches for alcohol. Um, so that, that's, that's the option you have, and you can kind of use that, those exclusionary, uh, distances to kind of, you know, make it so there's no feasible other place that can be set up, um, by restricting that within certain distances of things.
So, on that note, just a question then, how big of a radius will we be looking at for setting that?
It's up to you. Uh, I've seen in the past, like a thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet.
We have fifteen hundred for, uh, the liquor.
Yep.
Package stores, but for, if we want to have one, uh, retail cannabis dispensary, then, you know, for all the areas that we're permitting, uh, these areas to have.
It would be.
Businesses, it'd have to be a pretty big number.
Right, and you'd have to maybe involve multiple different entities, you know? Schools are, are certainly one. You could do daycares, you could do, uh, I mean, I could look into it. Uh, I can do that on the GIS and do radiuses and stuff like that. Um, we're kind of with the prohibition, uh, defunct at one right now. Say if that ever went out of business, you could, you could lift the prohibition at that time.
Could we say no to some of these areas?
Yes.
Grandfather that one in?
Yes.
So that would be another option?
Yeah, so the one you currently approves in the B two zone. Um, you know, B one is in the southeastern corner of town. Uh, RI is by Jarvis in the town garage. IP is kind of seventeen and sixty-six intersection. Um, I can look into these different things and get back to you. Um, to do the exclusionary in that fashion, or we can just keep the prohibition.
Well, you can't keep the prohibition indefinitely, can you?
We can.
We can?
Yep. Unless there's a change in state statute. That, that wouldn't allow us to do that, but...
I would rather see language that limits and excludes rather than expressly says prohibits.
Okay.
It, you know, I know it'd be a little bit more complicated that way, but I'd want to avoid putting anything in there that says prohibition. Um, only because, uh, I'm under the opinion, if we're going to do any kind of prohibition on our regulations, I'd rather see it go to the town as a vote rather than anything we do. I don't mind regulating it and limiting things, but for, you know, expressly prohibiting anything.
So it's, it's up to you guys. We couldn't, if we wanted to, send it to a town vote. There, there's no referendums on, uh, on zoning regulations. You, you guys are the body. Um, so it's, it's, whatever fashion you guys decide you want to do it, uh, I will, I will facilitate that for you.
Um, so the problem with the population cap was an issue with the state as well?
No, so my, my, I was told the state can, uh, legislate in that fashion, whereas you, we are not allowed to do that at the municipal level.
Okay, so it's not just that we can't limit it to one, we can't limit it based on population either?
That is my understanding when I asked. I, I can rephrase the question, but, um, I believe the person I asked, uh, kind of, kind of understood that. Um, you know?
Who did you ask?
I, I didn't, uh, John Gaskowski from Teich Planning. Um, so he's done multiple towns. I can reach out to Carrie. She's been out the last two weeks. Um, so I, I could get an official opinion from her, if you guys would like, um, on that. Um, it, it, I think it goes back to kind of not wanting to have towns pick winners and, and stuff like that. Um, so to me, it's always kind of more the market would dictate how many would be, but, you know, if, if a board feels that, you know, more than what we have is, is problematic, and I think it's reasonable, especially since this law's so new, um, to, to, to have limits on it. Um, it may look outdated one day like alcohol does to us now, I think. Um, but it, it, you know, it's really however you want to see this proceed.
Well, why don't we draft up language for, um, a distance prohibition from existing, um, cannabis dispensaries and schools?
Okay.
So that way, we don't need to have some astronomical number limiting the distance, but, um, it should do, I think, an effective job of limiting the number of licenses or places that we could have dispensaries. But, um, it would only be limited to dispensaries and not, um, any of the, like, cultivation businesses.
So, would you be opposed if, instead of schools, we say, like, uh, town facilities, uh, and maybe throw in parks?
So that becomes a little vague, and plus there's a park that's probably within five hundred feet of that, uh, or existing dispensary or the license that we...
Right, so that wouldn't be prohibited regardless of what we do.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing, I'm just trying to think of the areas in town where we currently have a special permit allowance for that. Schools and the existing approval will not cover the RI zone. Most likely won't cover the IP and B one zone and all the B two zone. Um, so, so I can come back to you with, I can try to do a map showing you where that, the different exclusions wo- would. You know, I can just drop points and just do radii off those on my mapping program, so why don't, um...
I think that's a good idea.
Why don't I, I come back to you guys next meeting, kind of showing you.
Yeah.
Where these different things and where we'll exclude stuff.
And what the, what's near them.
I think we also have to flush out.
Well, yeah, we can discuss that.
I think we also have to flush out, like, you know, the special permit versus the not allowed in certain areas. A little bit more thoroughly. I, I don't know that we all agree, um, on that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can certainly tailor that and if you...
We need to have, I think, I think we need to make these decisions, because that's what we're here for. And I think that we should really, like, all talk about it. I know Chantel has some opinions that she had mentioned last time and Rob has opinions and I haven't really expressed mine yet, and I think we should really...
Just go through each zone?
Yeah, I think, I think that we should really, you know...
I think that's a good idea.
Discuss this in depth, because it does come, it does fall on us to make these decisions.
Definitely. So let me get the map to you guys, showing you what the exclusionary areas might look like. We can even tweak the distance if need be. Um, and then we can see what areas are still left open, and if you decide those uses aren't, you know, appropriate for those areas, we can certainly remove that.
That sounds good.
And it's always possible, if times change, to either add the, to add these uses back. Um, so if you don't allow it, say in B one, a couple of years from now, somebody wants to do something down there, you could certainly always change the regs if, you know, that store opens up and it's not of any, um, you know, what's the word I want to use, uh, controversy, those controversies surrounding that, or any problems with it.
And then I, I have a, a kind of strange question.
Sure.
Maybe it's not a strange question, but, um, when, when someone cultivates, let's say hemp, um, and they don't discriminate between male and female plants, and they have male plants on the property, that affects the cultivation. That would affect the, like, the cultivator that we already have in town, because it's, it's my understanding that there isn't adequate filtration to filter out pollination from another cultivator nearby.
So are you referring to, uh, do we have a hemp cultivator in town?
No.
Okay.
But, but, but that absolutely could fall under some of this. So my question is, is if we're going to start to talk about this, I think that is a question that I have that may be reaching out to the current cultivator and just finding out if that would be a potential problem.
You're saying like cross-pollination?
Yes, because, I mean, I did, at, at one point attend, like, a, 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 a couple months class on, on this, and that was an issue. And so, at that time, so I just don't, I think that, you know, while we're discussing where cultivation can happen, I think that that might be something that we should at least know the facts of.
So is that, is that if they cultivate outside of a greenhouse or, or in, as well as in a greenhouse?
Yeah, like, if you, if you, if you grow hemp, let's say, on, you know, on acre of land, that, there's, and you, you don't, you don't distinguish between male and female plants, because you don't care. And so, the male plants can pollinate, the, 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 they pollinate a great distance. And it doesn't filter out of, it's hard to filter the pollination out.
So it doesn't happen, so it wouldn't happen?
So it doesn't happen, so somebody who's cultivating, like, you know, mar- medical marijuana or, um, you know, definitely doesn't want their plants pollinated, i- is that, is that an issue? That's my question. I don't know if it is or not, but I think it could potentially.
So, so we can try to find that answer, but are you thinking we need, like, certain distances around?
I don't even know if the distance was something like, I, I mean, I re- I recall it being over five miles.
So, so you, you're concerned somebody growing outside will, because all the cultivators that we will have will be indoors?
Where, why?
For marijuana, because that's required by state statute. You wouldn't be able to grow medical marijuana or marijuana for sale.
But you could grow hemp.
So you're worried about the hemp production affecting the, the cannabis?
Cannabis.
Okay. Um...
And I don't, and I don't know what the, the laws are around hemp production.
I, I know there are speci- like, there's specific statutes regarding that, because they have to make sure that they're not.
Yeah, and, and so I'm just wondering, while we're looking at all of this...
I, I will try to find you an answer too. This, this may be...
I hate to complicate it further, but I, I think it might be just something that it would be nice to know.
So it could contaminate?
It can contam- yeah.
I mean, I can, I can call Reno, um...
That might be more of a, like, a, a non-issue at this point, because we're not really looking at, like, hypotheticals of, like, what could happen in that respect. We're more just looking at, um, what businesses do we want coming in to the town and, you know, the scope of those. For hemp production, if we don't have anybody or even considering any kind of hemp regulations, uh, I, I don't think that'd be something we'd have to worry about, because there's not going to be any difference between somebody doing home grow in a year when it's legal versus the, you know, somebody growing, you know, uh, you know, cannabis indoors. And so, you know, I, I think we might be getting, that might be getting too much into the weeds on the, uh, on the issue of...
Yeah, no.
So I'll, I'll look for the answer. That, that's a, that's a good point though, because I don't think we would, this, this body would regulate hemp production. It would fall under farming. So if you want to farm your land and you want to grow hemp, that's not, you know, not our, our purview.
Yeah.
If you wanted, and I think the other, the really good point Rob made is that, um, if individuals are growing marijuana themselves, that is not something this board will regulate. Um, so I, I'll, I'll put the question out to Reno and see what he says.
I'm just interested in that, yeah.
Okay.
For an answer to that.
Yeah, I can try to find that out for you.
But, um... Because we know we're not growing hemp in town. If it truly is a five-mile distance that this stuff can travel, it could be a neighbor in town.
That's very true.
Growing hemp.
Yeah. Well, then it would, then that would be a question about, you know, the, the cultivators and how, what kind of protection or...
Yeah, quality control or something like that.
I, I just think there is some relationship, and I'm kind of curious as to...
Yeah, I can look. I'll, I'll try to get an answer on that. I can't guarantee I'll get one in two weeks. That one's a little harder.
I know, I know. I just, you know, it's just one of those things.
The other thing, I, I saw a headline that said a neighboring town put regulations in to limit the number of, um, allowable cannabis, retail cannabis, uh, sites to three, two. I thought it was either East Hampton or...
I, you know what?
I will look into that.
I think I saw that too in, like, the river.
Well, and I'll pu- I'll put the question to Carrie and get, I'll get an opinion from her on that.
Or maybe they were considering it. I don't remember if it...
I thought that they, it got passed. I think it was East Hampton, so...
I can talk to Jeremy. I, I know him very well. I can talk to Jeremy, I know him very well.
Oh, you do, okay. So the point is, you know, if they were able to do that, how did they do it?
Yeah, no, that's fair, and I'll put it out to Carrie too. John was pretty confident, he's been doing this a long time, so.
Maybe somebody didn't realize they couldn't do it. That could be too.
Okay, so Dan's got some homework.
Once again.
Anything else on cannabis regulations before we move on? All right, next item is online material repository and training.
Okay, so I sent out the agenda to Google Drive. I know Carolyn, I didn't have the right email address for-
Well, no.
Yeah, we're just looking at it.
I couldn't get in it, well, I went and logged in and he's, I saw it, you do have the right. I have two email addresses.
So I got an email about accepting your thing, and I did this yesterday or this morning.
Oh, well, maybe I can get, well, I gotta find a Wi-Fi.
What does that mean, that she was able to access it?
I thought so.
I went in and it said request approval.
Okay, I'll have to double check that, but-
So I probably got, you probably sent that back, and if you did it today, I-
You were the only one that happened with. I did say a couple, oh, where did my sticky note go? A couple people didn't have Google accounts, I think Ken, you were one of them, Chantel was one of them. Chantel had the most concern and I think just a little wariness about it, but how did the rest of you guys feel about that format?
Did I have a Google account?
You might not have either, did you get an email about that?
I don't use Google, I think I have a Google email, but I don't, I think-
Yeah, so if you have a Google email, you have a Google account. De facto.
Yeah, but you don't need a Gmail account to-
Yeah, I just-
Yeah, I think you don't need a Gmail account necessarily, but I thought, I set it up so you all could do it.
Yeah, it's anybody with the link.
Then that's what, I mean, I could email the link, but I was just trying to set, do the email thing. I mean, did it work, I'm assuming it worked for you, Rob?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
It worked for me, yep.
Okay.
It might be-
Came in an email from Dan.
Dan, instead of sending out the document itself, create subfolders.
Yeah, this was just a trial run, see how it goes, because what I'll have to do is link Liz in, because she usually sends everything out, and just get her on it. So I just wanted to send something out this meeting and make sure-
I got it.
Okay, cool, and just, you know, kind of just give you a taste of it, just to, just to see how, what everybody thought, and then we can kind of, we can kind of transition to that. Okay, so I'll have to look into Victoria, but what I'll do is maybe I'll, I don't want to start sending stuff before you guys are comfortable receiving it that way. So we'll try to send it both ways next time and try to build that up, you know, and then eventually just transition over if that, if that's what you guys ultimately want to continue to do.
All right, I guess I had to, I guess you hadn't, when I went back, I tried the next day after I tried it, maybe you hadn't gotten to me yet.
I do not know. All right, well, we'll try, we'll do it-
But I got it.
Okay, we'll start doing it some more.
Do you know if you have my-
I sent it to you, definitely. So, but I got a note to check what I sent out to you and maybe we'll do a trial run with you. And I can do a trial one, it should have just come to your normal email account that you normally use.
What if we get the agenda sent to another?
Yeah, yep. Yes. Do you want me to add a different email for us sending stuff out to you?
What is-
Would you prefer that? We don't give it out to people.
I got, I got all of this, I don't know why I didn't have that.
Okay, well, what I'll do is, I'll give you a call during the week.
The email that's in there is Farm Manager?
Yeah.
I mean, I got all of this other stuff today, I don't know why I wouldn't have gotten that.
Well, what I'll do is I'll just give you a call and we'll try it again.
Could have gone to junk.
That's a possibility, but I'd be surprised with Google. What I'll do is, I'll just call you, I'm going to do this, since Chantel's not here anyways, I'm going to end up trying to do this with her again anyways, since she was so apprehensive, so. We'll just build on this, get you guys comfortable, and then we'll transition when you're ready. Huh?
Zach knows that. Chantel's son Zach will, who knows?
Well, I mean, she displayed a lot of apprehension at the meeting, so I just want, yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable before we stop emailing you guys stuff and just send it to Google Drive.
One other thing, Dan, for permissions, access level, most of us probably shouldn't have editor level, we should have viewers.
Okay, I can change that, honestly.
So we don't edit everything?
I didn't really care if you guys wanted to do stuff.
The thing is, is that if we're all in a document and we had, can edit it, I don't know how that would fall into FOIA stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't looking for you guys to edit stuff, I just, I just figured just give you full permission at that point.
I know, that's-
I can change it, you know, yeah.
I think we want to dial that down a little bit.
I, I trust you guys, you know.
Yeah, but we could have a disgruntled commission number at some point.
I hope not.
Okay, how about training? Oh, you were talking about training on Google Drive?
Yes, yep.
Okay, because we had talked about, last meeting we had talked about training about kind of a better understanding of-
Yes, I'm going to set that up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in the works.
Okay, anything else on our repository?
No, that should be all.
Okay, let's see, so next item is a memo regarding Portland's solar regulations.
Okay, so as I talked to you guys about, I think last month, Portland wants to reach climate leader designation through Sustainable CT, right now we're silver. So one of the things to do that was the solar review of our regulations and some training in the Land Use Office. The first step of that was just a review by myself of the zoning regulations in regards to our zoning regulations and any unintentional or intentional prohibition, things that prohibit solar development. So when I went through, started with height, really height comes into play because there's two different, you know, basic solar installations. There's roof mounted, ground mounted. Roof mounted, we have an exception through 391, as long as it covers less than 25% of the roof area. I did highlight that restriction on the roof area as a potential inhibitor of, you know, solar roof. Second was, and ground mounted, the monopole array that this would be, would have to meet our height limitation for the zone it's in. So either 35 feet in most of the zones, and then there's a 50 foot provision. Secondly, there's setback requirements, this would only affect ground mounted, and just kind of contain where in the yard and how close to the property boundary this, the arrays would be. Would not affect any roof mounted based on 391 or any non-conforming buildings. Lot coverage, impervious surface, we only count roofed structures, so that would not apply to any of the solar panels. We don't have any screening requirements, and then the Town Center Village District. I want to talk to our reviewer, but the criteria in the Village District indicates that the proposed building shall be constructed with appropriate materials for scenic and historic New England town. I don't think they had solar panels in mind when they said that, but, so that's certainly something to consider. So the next step to this, after sharing this with you, is for me to come up with proposed regulations that might alter these things. This is not something that we necessarily have to follow through on, but it's something we can discuss as to what you guys want to do, and I can kind of give you insight as to, you know, anything I think might, might, might work or not work. So this wasn't meant to be too long of a discussion, really just kind of just an overview of what's there, and then I'll come back with more, some regulations, and we can discuss those in November in more depth, probably at the November 17th meeting, as long as that subdivision doesn't drag on too long and take up too much of your time. If not, we can kick it a little bit, a little bit further down the road, but the goal is to kind of get all this wrapped up, you know, by the beginning of next year sometime, because we have to achieve a certain amount of points, and this is like 20 points, and so that's kind of what we're doing. Do you guys have any questions?
Why 25% coverage? Where did that come from?
That's in our regulations. I don't know. We could change that, that's one of the regulations I'll come up with that I will alter in terms of the amount of roof area, but that's what's in our regs. And I think it's only 25% over the height, which, you know, if you build a house now, it meets the height limitations, and if you put solar panels on it, they're probably going to meet the height limitation regardless. But it is possible that we could run into some few situations where 25% might come into play. But that's what the, it also doesn't just talk about solar panels in 391, it's like mechanicals for buildings. I think it talks about like church spire, satellite dish antennas, I think it talks about a couple other things too. So it's not just solar panels that that exemption refers to, but we could carve out a larger 1.4 solar.
Acupara?
Yes, yeah, that's in there too, yeah.
Just, I think, a comment on your number five, Dan?
Sure.
I think you left out a knot. So this does, should say does not restrict solar applications.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we can mull over this for the next couple of weeks, and unless there's any further discussion today, anybody would like to bring up? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to staff report. So Town Center Village Review, let's see, new signage on building for Fabian Pizza and exterior painting.
Yeah, so all he's doing is, did Liz send out the examples to you? Okay, and we got the review from Torrance, yeah, it's pretty minimal. He's taken over Portland Pizza House, Portland Pizza House is, I guess there was a rumor that it was closing, it's just closing down for this transition. He's worked there for years, the owner just has two stores, he's older, and he just wants to move on. So this gentleman is taking over the business, he's doing the new signage, and then I think he's doing red and green, proposed red and green on the stairs.
Can I, which one is this?
Portland Pizza House right across the street, the one that Angelo's family used to own way back when, if you remember that one, it's across from the middle school, next to Board Narrows.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
So no action needed on this tonight, Dan?
Uh, just a motion to, just approve.
Did you draw one up or?
I didn't, no.
So, I'll make a motion to approve, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Yep.
So the proposed work is consistent with the design standards, intent of the Village District, so the green and red painted concrete stairs are-
That is what our consultant has said.
They are, it is-
Yes, that's what he's saying, yep.
Sorry to interrupt you.
It's fine.
No, it's a good question.
Any other questions before I make a motion? Okay, motion to approve the signage and painting proposal for 279 Main Street, Fabian Pizza. May I have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
This is Bob, I vote aye. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Any opposed? There would be none, so the motion is approved. Okay, next item is a corner lot question from the new regulation change.
Okay, so I did speak with ZBH Chair Rosalita, and yeah, so that was her intent, that it would apply to all structures, so we'll just leave it as is. If something comes along down the pike where you guys want to change it, we can always do that as well. So we'll just, you know, keep enforcing the regs as they are now and leave it at that.
Okay. Next item then is correspondence.
We have none.
Have none. All right, then we'll move on to public comments, so we'll now hear any brief comments from members of the public on any topic other than pending applications.
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in chat? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to approve the minutes from 10:06. So, let's see. So present, thank you, present at that meeting were myself, Chantel, Rob, Carolyn, Victoria, and Ken as an alternate. So we do have a quorum of those members, so may I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Okay, the minutes from 10:06 are approved, and may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Bob, not to keep you any longer, I just wanted to share something that I learned, what was from EDC. Michelle in the First Selectman's Office informed me, apparently you don't have to have been at the meeting to vote for the minutes of that meeting. So she had sent me a legal opinion that the town had received on that, I guess that came up when like the Board of Selectmen trans- transitions from one board to the next, and they didn't have a quorum of board members remaining after the last election, and they still had minutes to vote on. Apparently, you can vote for a meeting even if, on the minutes of the meeting, even if you weren't there. So I just figured I'd share that with you, I didn't think that was the case, but-
I guess maybe because we view them.
Well, that's making an assumption that you did view them.
Yeah, I always thought you had to be there, so, but apparently that's not the case, so I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you.
Learn something new every day, I guess.
Okay, all right, let's see, okay, anything else? May I have a motion to adjourn then, please?
It's moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.